Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you again for joining me on 1341 Springmore In-House TV for our weekly Town Hall meeting. We do these every Wednesday at 2:00 to update all the residents on what's going on at Springmore. It's always followed up by a memo to recap what was talked about, in addition to various memos throughout the week when there's information to share. So, again, just to kind of reiterate why we do the Town Hall meeting, it's a chance for me to get in front of you, to just tell you personally what's going on, and for you to see me and know that I'm here and the staff's here, but we are socially distancing like everyone else. And again, in this empty auditorium, which is odd to not see anybody, but somebody reminded me to just picture everyone's in here. I do pretty good with that. It's kind of weird seeing all these empty chairs, but thanks for joining in and tuning in today to listen to what we have to say. Things continue to change. If you watch the news or if you keep up with anything, you'll see that things will come more and more strict, and it seems to go on longer and longer. And it's very odd, you know, it's just thinking about how we control this is the only solution is to stay inside. And I just, I think about that, I feel like that's so archaic and just so prehistoric to all this technology and all these advancements we have, and the best solution is to stay inside and not get around each other. And it makes perfect sense, and I feel sure they'll have a vaccine to cure this soon, but you know, for now, it's just, it's just the oddest thing. So, anyway, that continues to change. It continues to be more strict, and I'm afraid this is going to go on, you know, longer than probably expected, or maybe hoped for amongst many of us. But actually, I was, when this first started, I never thought how bad this would be. I'm actually supposed to be in Seattle this week, visiting my sister for vacation. And when this first started, I said, ah, we'll go to Seattle. I'm not worried about it. The one thing I was worried about was everybody thinking, oh, how irresponsible it'd be for Brandon to go to Seattle during this time. And I said, oh, if they find out I'm there, and that's where the first case is, and I come back here, that'd be terrible. And as things went on, I quickly learned that there's no way I could go to Seattle, even if I wanted to. So, it has just changed within the four weeks that, you know, we had that plan to go, and I was debating, do we go or do we not go, to where we can't even go now. Nothing's open, flight canceled, all that stuff. So, just, just an amazing time and something to look back on and try and explain it to my kids. It's really hard for them to fathom. So, so we'll dive into some of the topics we got today. Some of these are reiterating some things, and some of these are some new things that we were wanting to implement, and also some announcements this week. So, the first one I want to talk about is dining. I just wanted to kind of reiterate or clarify the process for that. Again, we do have the online ordering form that many of you are using online through the portal. Thank you for continuing to utilize that. That makes it very easy on the staff. Hopefully, it's very easy on you. You don't have to leave, and you can just do everything from your home on the portal. So, I think that's running really smooth. I hadn't heard any complaints about that. The one hiccup I've heard about is the paper menus. As you know, last week, we changed to where the menus were posted at the central locations with four different packs of paper, and then you, and then you filled out each, each week on different packs of paper. So, now it's just, the menu is four menus on one sheet of paper, and you circle what you want each day, and then you put it in the basket. We're getting a lot of people that are picking up the menus, and they're circling them and leaving them outside their door. That is not the correct way to do it. We need to put it back in the basket so everything can be accounted for. Right now, we only have one phone line open for dining services to answer phone calls. We've had to move the staff into the springs because they're doing the kitchen renovation, and their office is under construction along with the entire kitchen. So, when we have to call about 60 to 70 people like last week because their menus weren't turned in properly, it backs up the whole process. So, please just, when you go to get your meal every day, or if you just get out for a second each day, just fill out your menu every fourth day and place it back in the basket. Don't, don't leave it by your front door because that's, that's not the proper procedure, and it, and it confuses people, and it confuses the staff and backs it up. So, also, as far as dining, we continue to deliver the meals, and I think they're doing an excellent job with that. We added a sundae option this past Sunday of a sandwich. A lot of people have asked about the bistro. Open it again. We're not going to be able to open the bistro until things are lifted and restrictions have been eased up, but we hope to have some items from the bistro that you can order that can be delivered. But we're not going to do that until after Easter. We finally got a good process. It's finally running and it's smooth. So, adding another layer to that, we just want to take our time and ease into it. It's kind of like I said, from the first day, we've kind of got to the bare bones at this point. So, now we're trying to see what we can do to increase some of the services and some of the amenities for each of you. And I know dining services is a big one. It's, it's one of the most important things of the day. You used to go to the dining room and interact with everybody and socialize, and now, you know, you look forward to that meal, just to have something to do in your apartment and have something to choose from. So, we're going to try to have some more choices, but bear with us as we get through Easter and make sure our process is streamlined pretty well before we add anything else. Pathways, we've got a lot of cool things going on with pathways. So, Leah continues to be extremely innovative in the things that she's doing. So, I wanted to read off some of the stuff she has, and then I'll show you some things as well. And while I'm thinking about it, we will take calls again, 305? 7054. None of us can remember the number, 7054. Again, if you can wait until after the broadcast, that would be great. Hopefully, I'll cover a lot of the stuff like normal, and I'll try to answer as many questions as I can. If I don't have the answer, as always, I'll follow up in a memo, do the recap memo with the answer to that. So, I'm going to read off what Leah had here for us. First of all, it's regarding the mail. You've heard me talk about the mail. I won't reiterate that. We're doing great. But there is now a new sign up here in North Village, and it refers to, check, please check for large mail items on the tables outside of Leah's office. The items are in numerical order in boxes, east, west, houses and villas. Second-class mail and larger items will no longer be delivered to your apartment. So, please be mindful of that. No more second-class mail is going to be hand-delivered to your apartment. Please practice social distancing and stay six feet apart, one person per six-foot table when you're retrieving your mail. So, that's regarding the mail and the larger items. Next, we're going to have a bingo game. The bingo numbers are going to be announced Monday through Friday on Springmore TV, 1341, which you're watching right now. Prizes from Harry and David, and this, this started Monday of this week. So, this is the bingo card here I'm holding, and if you guys have played it, hopefully know how it works. One letter, number displayed on each channel, displayed on channel 1341 each day. The first to get bingo in any direction calls the hotline and lets them know who they are and that they think they have bingo. So, Leah or Brenda will call and confirm that. So, that's something to look forward to every day. Again, that just gives you some excitement in your day with, with virtual activities. It's kind of like watching Kino, I think, right? It's just, just gives you something to do as you kind of sit, but it's pretty innovative, and I want to thank Leah for doing that. Another cool thing that she has is a photography contest. That's one thing we're so blessed with is to have a beautiful campus here at Springmore, 42 acres, where you can get out, walk around, and now I think it's more important than ever to be at a place like this versus some of our other friendly competitors that don't have such lovely grounds such as us. And part of having lovely grounds is all the wildlife and, and flowers and trees that are blooming this time of year. So, we decided, we actually, Brendan and Leah, who are the very creative ones, decided to do a photography contest. So, what we want to do is submit any photos to Leah or Brenda via email. The deadline is Tuesday, April 28th. You got most of the month, and the prize is going to be a Fitbit, which is $100. So, if you're doing a lot of walking like everybody else now, you can kind of see how many steps you take, how many calories you're losing. Unfortunately, I don't have one of those, or keep up with that, but I need to. So, photography contest. Submit them by Tuesday, April 28th, and all this information should be on the portal. And I know Leah's probably sent this out, but I just want to reiterate that. So, very neat idea. Get some good photographs. All right. Next, we're generating a list slash contact information for restaurants that deliver. So, I realize we eat here every day, and one thing I miss is eating lunch here every day at Springmore. I either have to bring leftovers or go out and eat fast food, which I did today, which I'm not proud of, but it is a hindrance, and even for staff that we can't have food. And I know that we're the only option for many of you now, as you can't go out as much. But we do have a lot of restaurants in the area that, that actually deliver. So, Leah is working on generating a list, and we'll get that to you as soon as possible. Another thing she's working on is a list of grocery stores that have curbside pickup or either delivery. She should have this soon. Some residents are using Instacart, which is a mobile app where you can order groceries from certain grocery stores, and they'll deliver it here at Springmore to the front desk, and you can come get them, or the guards will bring them. But there's other ones that, that maybe not be, that are not on Instacart, that have delivery options, and then, of course, some that you can just pick up curbside. So, we'll get that to you as soon as possible to help give you some more variety of things that you can have to eat other than, you know, what's offered here every day, which, you know, I know many of you have been very thankful and so many nice compliments for dining services. But unfortunately, I don't see us opening the dining room for probably another two months, this month and next month. I, I don't know that for a fact, but I'm just being realistic more than, I'm very optimistic, but I'm being realistic in timeframe. So, I'm afraid we're going to be doing this, you know, longer than anticipated. So, so just keep that in mind as you order out more food. Raffle ticket fun. We have another, another flyer for that. So, this is, hopefully you've seen one of that. All these are a nice color. The raffle ticket fun, stay indoors prize. This does not mean that you cannot leave your apartment. This is just a reminder to be diligent in practicing social distancing. Please stay six feet apart at all times. A raffle ticket is attached to this sheet. Keep it in a safe place. Once a week, Thursday afternoon, so every Thursday, be tomorrow, Monday, Thursday, we will draw from the tickets and a prize will be awarded. This will go on for several weeks. So, do not throw away your ticket. If you don't win the first couple of times, your tickets are still good for a while. So, it's not like the Resident Association meeting where everybody gets a ticket, and we call out two numbers, and then you throw them away, and next month we have them again. Keep your ticket because we're going to constantly keep drawing numbers based on the ticket that was submitted with this form. So, hold on to it. That, that'll be the one that you'll have, and you'll keep, and we'll let you know when the, when, we'll let you know when, when to dispose of the tickets. So, they'll issue new ones. We'll let you know. So, hold on to that one that you have. And lastly, which I thought this was really cool, and I thought about doing this myself once I saw this, as I told you earlier, trying to explain this to my kids and for them to comprehend, and it's just, they can't, and I hope I never have to go through this again. So, but what a life event. So, coming soon, we'll, we'll be providing each married couple or individual with a journal to record their COVID-19 experience for their grandchildren and family. After this is over, we would love to have our program with residents reading some of their journal, journal entries. Also coming soon, music streaming on 1341 for our Springmore Entertainment Pool. So, that is really neat to keep a journal. I'm going to do the same thing. I have never lived through anything like this. The only thing I can relate this to is 9/11, which was one day of horror, and this continues to be many days of horror. So, I, I cannot imagine, I know many of you have lived through wars and other terrible things, the depression, but this is, 9/11 is the only thing I can relate this to, and this seems much worse for a much longer period of time. So, one of those life events that will be worth passing down. The music streaming is something new that I think is really cool. That will provide a little bit more entertainment for you while in your home. Many of you know that we have a reading channel that we're trying to implement, and this would have been the absolute perfect time to do that. Ms. Alex Campbell has helped me, right, she brought it to me, a reading channel that they're going to be able to read certain things over the in-house TV, local and national newspapers, books, updates of various, various things, various topics that will be able to be read on, on the TVs you just sit there and listen. Unfortunately, we need Spectrum to upgrade our channel inserts before that happened. So, all that was going to take place with the Spectrum installation that was supposed to happen two weeks ago. Unfortunately, as you know, that did not happen. So, so all that is on hold, but we're excited that we can do music if we don't have actual news or entertainment to listen to. The next thing I want to talk about in the pathway section is, is our chaplains and spiritual wellness. As you know, this week is Holy Week, so Easter comes up on Sunday, and that is, and before that, Monday, Thursday, tomorrow, and Good Friday on Friday. Many staff members are off on Friday, so be mindful of that. We do celebrate Good Friday here at Springmore, so we'll be home with our families an extra day. But I wanted to remind every week, remind everybody what we have going on during Holy Week. All the broadcasts will be on 1341, which you're watching now, and bulletins will be at the tables where the menus are. So, make sure you know that. All the services we have this week, tomorrow, Monday, Thursday service will be 7:00 PM. It'll be streamed live on 1341. So, that's one of my favorite services of the year. At my church and probably many of yours, that they strip the altar. It's a very somber service. It's kind of fitting here in this empty auditorium. It's kind of empty Springmore, empty bistro. It's kind of somber. So, I think tomorrow will, the whole community will kind of be in that mood after that service. Tomorrow, Good Friday, 2:00 PM, we'll have a streamed live service. And then Easter Sunday, we'll have Sunday School Stream with Mr. Tom Jackson at 10:00 AM, and then Vespers will be at 7:00 PM for Easter. So, it's a great place to come and worship with churches not being open and not being able to get out. We're so blessed, especially this time of year to have two fantastic chaplains that are so dedicated to each of you, but also so dedicated to important holidays or, or religious holidays for that nature of just Easter and the important time. So, we're very thankful for that. So, please tune in. They put a lot of time and effort into that, and I want to make sure that people are partaking in that. Quick announcement about the bank. I spoke with Vidia yesterday, and we're going to cut the time that she's in moving forward, at least for the next two weeks. We'll see how things get, but for the next two weeks, she's only going to be at Springmore Monday, Wednesday and Friday, nine to two. So, she'll still be here, here her normal times, time slots, but reduced days of Monday, Wednesday and Friday. So, those are the last kind of announcements and updates I have. The last three sections I really, really want to drive home pertains to social distancing, going out, and family members on campus. I made a bunch of notes, but I think I can probably just read this off the top of my head and just, and tell you what I want to say. The social distancing guidelines are so important. At first, when I heard this, I heard people were social distancing in my neighborhood. I just thought that was the silliest thing I've ever heard. I just thought that was just overexaggeration. And as things have progressed, since the time I thought I was going to Seattle a month ago to now, I can't even get there, it has been proven that these things that are being recommended help stop the disease, spread of the disease. So, social distancing is one of the best practices you can do. So, please, please be mindful of the six-feet distance. I've had a lot of residents say that residents are not following the social distancing guidelines, and, and as I said in the last memo, we cannot police all 600 residents. So, I am begging you to please, to be mindful of the social distancing, you know, please be respectful, respectful of your fellow neighbors and follow the social distancing. And lastly, I tell you all a lot of times that y'all are the eyes and ears of Springmore. You tell me everything. Normally, I would not say this, but I would call the people out. Just call them out and say, hey, you're not, you're too close to me. You're not practicing social distancing. If y'all see it, don't let it go and just, and just call it out. Again, that's normally what I would not recommend because I know it's very awkward. Nobody wants to, you know, upset a neighbor or seem pushy, but in a time like this, you know, I highly recommend that you guys do that, and, and I think that's very important. When you're in the convenience store, we're only letting two in at a time. Make sure that you're six feet apart. When you're filling out the menus, make sure you're six feet apart. When you're getting the mail, you're six feet apart. Anytime you're anywhere with, anywhere with anyone, excuse me, make sure that you're six feet apart. A lot of people are very conscious of that. They're really strict, and they abide by it. When they see somebody not doing it with somebody else or getting too close to them, it makes them really uncomfortable, and I just, I beg that you please, please follow that and ask that, ask that residents call each other out on it. Going out, I've said before that I cannot stop anyone from going out, and I don't want to be the person to have to stop anyone from going out. I realize that people have to go out for, for, for certain necessities. But I, I strongly encourage you to only go out if necessary and go out as minimal as possible. So, if you got to go to the grocery store, get as much as you can in one trip. If you need to go to the pharmacy, get all your meds and any kind of toiletries you need in one trip. Going in and out every day to the general greater Raleigh area, even up to Stonehenge, that's just a greater risk of being around people and bringing the virus back into Springmore. Again, I cannot lock you in. I would never want to be the person to do that. You guys can't lock me in. I have to go home every day, and, and, but, but we really need to be mindful of that. Going out is just such a, such a frowned-upon thing, especially this week and next week, because they expect things to peak. So, so please, please be mindful of going out very, very minimal if at all possible. Use things like delivery services. Use the guards to do grocery runs. Use the restaurant pickup or the curbside pickup for groceries whenever Leah gets that to you. Those are all ways that can minimize your going out and within the community. The last thing I want to talk about before we take some calls is visitors. We, early on, again, we started at a certain point of things we were allowing to pretty much bare-bones, and that's, that's kind of where we're at, but we've got to get even more strict with visitors. It first started in the health center with, 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 with no visitors unless you're a spouse, and then we had to stop the spouses going in, and then there's no visitors in the health center. Then we asked no visitors to come inside Springmore except for essential staff, and then we turned off all the sensors on the doors. So, we have went from allowing some people to not having anyone. Last week, somebody asked a question if a family member could come on site and come on campus and talk or wave at a distance. I said that I discourage that. I don't think that's best practice, but I can't stop it. I still cannot stop anyone from coming on this campus unless I have a policeman stationed 24/7, which you're not planning to do, or if I put a giant wall up around Springmore, which that's not going to happen either. So, I need each of you to please have your family not come visit during this time. I realize this is tough. I know it's upsetting. I would love to go see my grandmother on Friday for her 91st birthday, but I would never drive to put her in danger to see her. So, I'm asking you to please have your family and friends not put you or the other 600 residents in danger by coming on campus. It is just too risky at this point. I'm hoping that will be one of the things we can lift before other things, the social distancing, being loosened, the gatherings of 10 than 50 coming back. I think those things will come back before others and hopefully sooner than later. But for right now, we don't, we don't, we need no visitors on campus. So, if you need anything from your family, you really need for them to drop that off at the front desk. What the families are doing in the health center, they're coming into the lobby right there, and where Joan is, who took Angela's place, and we're coordinating with somebody in the health center to get the supplies, the laundry, the medicine back to the residents in the health center. We have to have you do that here at Springmore as well, in the independent living. There's somebody 24/7 at the front desk, and if you need something, you need to drop it off there. We don't need you to come and meet your family in the lobby, and you guys all gather for 5, 10, 15, 20, 25, 30 minutes. That's a no gathering. We need to keep everyone apart. This has caused a lot of residents to be upset. I've got multiple phone calls, multiple emails, and I understand that, that certain residents are upset about it. So, I want to be clear in my memo. I know I said, I, I can't, can't remind exactly what I said. I said for families to, to not visit for any length of time. What I meant by that was if a family needs to drop something off at your doorstep, they drop it off and they leave. Or they need to put something very interesting in somebody's car for them to go get it later, then they drop it off and they leave, which is a good practice, by the way. But any length of time is sitting on a patio, talking from a balcony, and again, last week, I said I can't stop it, but I discourage it. Now, we really need to stop it. It is just upsetting too many people. There's too many people gathering. I'm getting complaints of residents with multiple family members walking around campus all together. I have family members going in through patios downstairs into the building. I have family members outside entrances talking for long periods of time, and that's making a lot of people upset, and a lot of people worried that the close interaction, the not social distancing and not, and not having visitors, and then coming back in the building. So, what I said in the last memo was, if you see anyone doing that, to please call the front desk. Please call the front desk and report it, and we'll send a guard to, to hat, to ask them to leave. That's all we can really do. That's all a policeman would do if I was at a baseball field with my son and three friends, and they saw us throwing the baseball. They would ask us to leave. So, again, we cannot police all 600 residents plus their family members. So, I'm begging you to please, as a resident to resident, help each other. Think about this as the endowment fund. We always talk about residents helping residents. I need for y'all now to help each other with the visitors. And just like the social distancing, I hate to say it, it's super uncomfortable, but call them out. Mrs. Jones, I saw your, your daughter shouldn't be here. She needs to leave. I mean, that's going to really stop it, and I, and I'm hopeful that the family will be like, gosh, shouldn't be here, and the resident will, you know, be, oh, I shouldn't have had her here, and then they won't come back. And I know that sounds like a silly solution, kind of like staying at home, but if we're not here 24/7 and we can't police 600 of you guys, but I'm getting all these comments and complaints and concerns from y'all, I need y'all's help to police it. So, again, call them out. Tell the resident, tell the family member, you know, we don't, we have a no visitor policy during this time, and you know, you don't need to be on campus. I, I think that's important to do. I'm not sure what else at this point we can do to have them not come on campus, but, but I ask that you please, please follow that. Again, if a family member needs to bring you something essential, have them drop it off at the front desk. That's the best practice. You don't go around anybody. You're right there where, where Edith or Marlene is, or Veronica or Greta on the weekend, and we'll make sure that we get it to you. So, so moving forward, no visitors, no gathering, social distance. Really need to drive that home. We're doing that with staff. We are, we're really practicing that, and staff members will call people out in a second. I mean, they will, and I'm being, I'm being dead serious. They will absolutely call people out in a second. We put signs up with Holly and Tracy where they are to keep six feet distance. There's six feet distance where Joan sits at the reception area down, down in the health center. We're taking it very serious. I need for each of y'all to please take it serious as well. So, please pass that along to your family members and just, and just, and just beg them and tell them not to come on campus for your safety and for everyone else. Lastly, I will say that we are working, I didn't have this on my notes, but we're working to get some masks for people. We have a group of volunteers, Ms. Harriet Ross and about 10 ladies who's working to make masks for us. We also have the gentleman who does all of our draperies, Barry Walkworth, Walker Draperies, that's making cloth masks for everybody. That's been proven to be a pretty good defense. It's not as good as a surgical mask or an N95 mask, but it's better than nothing, and they can be reused by being washed and sanitized. So, we hope to have all health center staff, CNAs, nurses, home care staff, and any housekeeper and dining staff in the health center with a cloth mask by Thursday. We have enough coming from Barry Walker and from what the ladies at Springmore have already produced to give everyone the health center one. After that, we have another big shipment coming in from Barry again, and from what the ladies are producing, we hope to have, everybody will have a cloth mask. We're going to continue to use those. We do have a supply of surgical masks, N95s, gowns, eye cover, but those are being reserved for anyone that is in isolation or if we have a potential case. Currently, we have no cases right now. I pray that that, that that continues, but I can't promise it, and I can't even be realistic about it. It's, there's other communities that have it. It's nothing to be ashamed of. If we get it, it's, it's like dodging 500 bullets a day. It's like you're wondering, are you ever going to get hit? And I pray we don't, and that's why I'm encouraging you to follow all these safety precautions. But if, if it happens, we have tons of policies, procedures. We got protective equipment. We're doing it every day. I've never felt more prepared of anything for my entire life. So, it's kind of like a continuous snow day, but you continue to prove and do better on it. We have a fantastic task force that meets at least once a week. We have an infection control nurse named Margot, our director of nursing, Leslie, Carrie Corley. There are so many people involved with making sure that we're keeping things on, keeping track with everything for best practices for staff when we need to care for someone. So, with that, that's all I have this week. I'll be happy to try to answer any calls you have. I'm hoping that the questions are less and less as I do these, and I send out memos. I do appreciate all the compliments and kind words you guys are sending out to all the I do appreciate all the compliments and kind words you guys are sending out to all the staff. It really means a lot during these times. So Daniel, we got a question? Okay, so the question was a resident was told to tape the menu to the door. I unfortunately cannot, I, I can't speak on that. I was told before to make sure that the menus were in the basket. I would encourage you, call 7092 and ask Jennifer exactly who, ask, tell them who you are, who told you that. And if there's some special arrangement I don't know about, you know, please follow up with her about that. So the question was the person delivering the meal should have masks and gloves. We're working on that. Again, the PPE supply is extremely limited. I was joking, but I'm very serious. If you think it's hard to find toilet paper and paper towels and paper products, finding masks is like a diamond in a rough. So we're having to reserve what we have for, for the health center for direct care staff. And if we get a case, if we get a case and somebody goes in 30 times a day, that's 30 masks we're burning on one shift, PPE gown, gloves. So once we get the cloth mask, we'll distribute it out to everybody else and we'll get them to staff as soon as possible. Again, we have to give them to the ones that are most need, which is the health center, and then they'll trickle down to the other areas. The question is how many people in an elevator? I would say, I would say one. I, I don't, yeah, I would say one. I mean, it's, you know, if you want to get crammed up by the, in the corner too. But I, the elevators are pretty quick. So I think best practice, one. Some of them are deeper than others, but I'll say one. It's a good question. So the question was what's the policy in going out to visit, to visit family members and coming back? If you go spend any time with your family overnight, that you, you'll need to be quarantined for 14 days. That's, that seems no different than me than going to the ER or going to the hospital. It sounds tedious, but I don't know where you've been, who you've been around, who your family's been around. There's, if you go home with a family member, you need to stay home. We do have residents right now that are home with family members and, and they're going to either have to stay there. When they come back, they got to be quarantined for 14 days. So if you go out with your daughter to pick up medicine and come back and I don't know about it, I don't know about it, but I strongly encourage you not to go anywhere with a family member. If someone, if you need something, they need to bring it to you. And if you do go out for any length of time with anybody other than Springmore employee to an essential doctor's appointment, you'll need to be quarantined for 14 days and we'll have to follow that through our policies that we have in place. So the question was can the scales and the fitness rooms be moved? Yeah, I don't see why that would be a problem. Somebody asked about having more exercise equipment in the great room and in the terrace room, but that would create more gathering. So I can make a note to see if, if Carrie can, can move those. I'm going on a limb and say yes. I don't see why they can't be moved. So I don't want to get on the scales, but you guys may want to. Move scales to, I'll just put fitness area, so I'll know where that is. Okay. Let me see if the question was where do you get the bingo cards? I'm not sure. I, I think Leah will probably be putting these in your box. One letter number displayed on channel 1340 each day. I, I assume that they will be placed in your box, but I, but I'm not sure. I hate to say I don't know, but I would call Leah or Brenda. If you don't have one in your box, check first because I would assume that's probably where they're at. If not, they may be outside of Leah's office. I am just not sure about that, but I will find out where that is. But in the meantime, if you want to call one of them real quick, for all I know, they probably told me and I don't remember. But I will, I'll find that out for you. Let me just make note of that. Bingo card. All right, Daniel? Will the numbers for Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday be repeated on bingo? I'll ask Leah to do that. I see no reason why we cannot do that. Leah, if you're watching, make note of that for me, please. I'll get with you and we'll, I'm sure we can just knock that out. Yeah, that's right. Yeah, Jennifer's direct line is 7092. I'll be, I will be, I'll be honest, I'll be honest anytime. She is not in her office much. She, they're, they're makeshift office for Jennifer and a few other staff is down in the old computer room down in West. She's in the kitchen a lot, the mobile kitchen, or she's in the office in the Springs. I think that number is 7072, but there's only one phone line in there right now. So I'm not sure which one got moved over. I think it, Daniel, do you know a phone, phone line? What phone line they have there in the Springs? Yes, I'm sorry. 7094. Yep, I was way off. 7094 is the one that, that is in the Springs. I'm, I'm almost certain. Daniel thought that as well. So, so you can use that one. But again, remember that's, that's the only line they have. So 7094 for any staff like Adam or the dieticians, but Jennifer, 7092. But any one of those areas can clarify whatever you need to know about a dining question. Oh, yeah. Yeah, so good, very good question. So how do we know we're not going to run out of the, out of food supply here? So Sedexo has been super proactive in making sure we have plenty of food on hand. We have an emergency menu if we have to go to that. And we have emergency food for 60 days that we can implement. It's not going to be your meals that you get now. I can promise you that. It's going to be more like a camping trip. But, but there has been, we have week, Jennifer has weekly, maybe bi-weekly calls with Sedexo. And there has been no talk or, or any indication of foods, food shortage anywhere. The one thing is that people are still needing to eat. They're not going out to restaurants, but they're picking up and grocery stores are being stocked. And we're still getting food in on a regular basis. Producers and farmers are cranking out stuff as much as they can, so times are good for them. So, so we do have an emergency menu we have created and we have a plan for 60 days of food on hand if, if we would ever get low. Okay, that's a good question. So I think I said this earlier. The question was is it better to meet a family member outside to bring the groceries in or have the family member bring them in? The best and only way to do this is have the family member with you not present, and that sounds awful, to drop it off at the front desk. That's the best and only way we need to do it. So we don't need to go outside. I know last week we talked about that and I said, listen, I discourage it, but I can't stop it. Now we really need to stop that. So no going outside, getting groceries from families, talking for a few minutes and coming back in. Everything needs to be dropped off at the front desk. South Village, second class mail. I am not sure about that. I don't have any information on that. I will find out where that is and I will, I'll get that to you. That's another question Leah can help me with. So South Village, second class mail. I don't know if it's due to the size of the mail, but the in-house mailboxes here, the ones are bigger in South Village. I know I saw the ladies down there. I saw Ms. Sharp the other day. She was sorting mail and I know Mr. David Waters is down there helping. So I'm not sure where, where they're exactly putting it, but I'll find out and let everybody know if you haven't been getting it. Yep, so the suggestion was there's good instructions to make masks online. That's very true. That's something that y'all are welcome to do. We have been fortunate enough, like I said, to have Ms. Harriet Ross and about 10 other ladies volunteer to make masks for the, for the staff. Then we had Barry Walker who can crank them out faster because he owns a fabric company. So by the end of the week, we should have enough. I'm making it more. I'm not sure, but that, but yeah, there's things online that talk about how to make a cloth mask and the best way to do that and sanitize it. So, so look that up or if you have a friend you can share with up underneath their door or, you know, if you're, if you see them, leave it for them somewhere so they can pick it up with some instructions. Yes, so if you're taking a spouse or anyone to a doctor's appointment, do you have to quarantine? We have decided not to do that. We're only quarantining now if you are off campus for an extended period of time with family or if you have had an ER stay or a hospital stay. So, so some people are having to go to essential medical appointments. Most appointments are being canceled unless they're essential. And from what I've found out and from what I've heard, that there are very few staffed in there. I don't think the doctor's offices are slammed like they normally are. I use the example of a couple of weeks I had to go with my wife. They only had four or five an hour. And then one, one couple's on one side of the waiting room, one was on the other, only one or two docs in there. I mean, full PPE at Rex, taking temperatures like, like, like we do. So that's something that I think is essential and we've got to continue. It's just like going to the grocery store. I mean, I can't say that you got to be quarantined for 14 days if you go to the grocery store. And I'm sure you'll interact with more people there than you with a doctor's office. So no, you don't have to quarantine if you go to the doctor's office or if you take a spouse. I would encourage to stay in the car unless you absolutely have to go in with them. I had to do the same thing for my wife, but, but just try to minimize those as much as possible. And again, the most, most, most important thing is if you have any symptom whatsoever, you got to call the clinic. And then the clinic can come. We can take your temperature. We can check for all the symptoms and then we'll go from there. So that's, that's the most important part is just making sure that you report any symptoms you have right away. So the question is, is it okay to use Uber, Lyft or a family member to get to a grocery, I mean, to a, to a doctor's appointment? I, I can't stop that. I mean, I highly encourage you not to. There's no reason not to use Springmore Transportation. Most of the runs we're doing now are grocery runs. It's free of charge. I highly recommend you use Springmore. Again, if you hop in the car with your daughter or Uber, I, I mean, I don't know what to say. I can't do it, but I would highly discourage you not to do that and use Springmore Transportation or try to, try to cancel the appointment just until things lift. The next few weeks, this week, next week, maybe the week after is going to be really tough. So anything that we can hold off until then is going to be very, very important. Yes. Okay, the question is the 14 days of quarantine include not using the laundry room? Yes, that means you are in your apartment 14 days. And that sounds terrible, but that is what we have to do. So no laundry room, no walking down the hall, no filling out the menu, no getting your mail. If you're quarantined, we should know from Joyce. We know everybody that goes out to the ER. We know everybody that's been in a hospital stay. And I've already have residents telling me, I know people are out of town. If they come back, I'm going to know. So, and we've had some people that's had to leave with family or, or leave for an extended period of time and they've been very upfront, which I know most of y'all are, and told us, hey, I've got to travel. I'm coming back and they already know they have to quarantine. So yes, quarantine means in your apartment, we come to you. We will bring you your menu, we'll bring you your mail and the clinic will come to you. So yeah, you have to stay in there and no, no laundry room as well. So those are all great questions. There's a few things I need to follow up on regarding bingo cards, reading the numbers and second class mail for South Village. But I do appreciate everybody tuning in and reading the memos and offering suggestions and feedback. And it's really hard to just be, you know, to sound so doom and gloom and, and to be so harsh. But I, I think we've all come to realize that this is really important. And telling you that family members can't come is really tough. That was the hardest thing to do was to tell spouses they can't go see their loved one in the health center unless it's an end of life situation. And now we've, now we're asking each of you to do it. So it's what everybody's recommending. It's the only way I know how to stop it. It's the best practice for all the residents here. So again, we always try to err on what's best for everybody and that is what's best. So thank y'all for following that. Thank you for taking that very important and thank you for continuing to look out for everybody. We'll see you next week and have a great Easter.